Thank you so much. And welcome to the City of Bessemer City Council Meeting, seventeen hundred third Avenue North in the great city of Bessemer. Today, August the seventeenth, twenty twenty one. The meeting has been called to order. The meeting has been called to order. We'll say a silent word of prayer. Again, please keep all sick, shedding, and this nation in your prayer. A word of prayer, please. Amen. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Present.
Counselor Collier. Counselor Crusoe. Counselor Marshall.
Present.
Counselor Big Pan.
Present.
Counselor Matthews.
Present.
Counselor Donald.
Present.
Counselor Collier, are you there? Six present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. That we are in Zoom. We will say the pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Donald. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Item number four, please.
Approval of minutes from July thirteenth, twenty twenty one. That's your meeting July twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one, and August tenth, twenty twenty one.
Counselors, we've had an opportunity to view your minutes. Are there any concerns and or questions, please? Please mute your devices. Please mute your devices. If there's not any questions and or concerns, I need a motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm moved to accept the minutes as distributed.
Second. I need a second.
Second.
Has been properly moved and second that we will accept the minutes for July the thirteenth, July the twentieth, and August the tenth. Ms. Taylor, roll call, please.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Big Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews. Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Six ayes, none nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number five, please.
Presentations, awards, announcements, and recognitions.
Counselors, do you have any presentations, award, and or recognitions? If not, Mayor Gully.
Madam President, uh, good, uh, again, uh, good morning and so to all of you. Uh, I do have several items I would like to sub to mention at this particular time. One being that, um, uh, one being that we received a notification that, uh, from the, uh, twenty twenty census, uh, that the population of the city of Bessemer uh, had fell from, uh, twenty seven thousand six hundred sixty seven, two thousand ten, to twenty six thousand nineteen in twenty twenty. Uh, we were also notified that, uh, as a result, and so of those, uh, figures, um, we lost, uh, Bessemer lost, uh, his seat on the, uh, Bessemer, uh, me only Birmingham, Justin County Transit Authority. Uh, uh, obviously, um, uh, the way the, uh, legislation is set up, uh, Birmingham gets five seats, the county get one seat, and then the three largest municipalities, uh, after that, uh, uh, gets a, uh, individual, uh, seat on the, uh, on the board and stuff as well. Um, with that said, uh, our population was less than the, uh, city of Homewood by four hundred and five, uh, uh, four hundred and five person, uh, population. Um, and as you all know, um, uh, Ms. Johnny Lassiter, uh, has been our representative on Max Board, uh, for the past twenty-two years. Uh, so, um, uh, obviously, upon that information, uh, they, the city of Homewood is already appointed, um, a person to that particular board. Uh, I just want to personally, uh, thank Ms. Lassiter for her service over the last twenty years, uh, twenty-two years. And, uh, I, I think we need to formally do something and stuff for, uh, for her and stuff as well. But, uh, unfortunately, um, we, we lose our seat, uh, on the, uh, Birmingham, Jefferson County Transit Authority Board. Uh, obviously, I disagree with that, um, but, um, that's the way the legislation and stuff is written. I do think at some particular point, uh, uh, we need to have our representative in Montgomery take a look, uh, 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 at that legislation. Um, uh, I, um, uh, I guess I, I hate the fact that we are the second largest and so contributor. We are the greatest ridership now. Uh, but, uh, unfortunately, we don't have any representation on the board. Uh, so I, I, I do disagree and stuff with, uh, the legislation, but as it stands, now that is what it is. And, um, we do leave, lose our representation on the board. Uh, I also, uh, want to inform us of the, um, the council as well that, um, we have received, uh, our ambulances, uh, two ambulances that we purchased, uh, on the, on last week, uh, we had the fire department bring them up. Uh, as you all are aware, we did not, um, get, um, a quorum and stuff at that particular time, but, uh, I do want to let you all know that those units, uh, are in, uh, and, uh, they, they are in service for emergency situations and stuff now. Um, I also, uh, want to, um, uh, uh, bring you all up to speed on situations that we have, uh, uh, in the street and sanitation department. Uh, I have Mr. Lawrence Hatter and stuff on the phone, and I'm going to tell Lawrence to come forth, uh, right now and just kind of, uh, uh, let you all know and so where we are relevant to some of the issues that we have going on, uh, in, uh, street and sanitation department. Uh, Lawrence, are you on the, uh, on, on the line? Mr. Hatter.
Yes, Sir Mayor, can you hear me?
Uh, yes. Uh, I'm going to turn this over to, uh, you at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Madam President, fellow council members.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, a couple of things that I want to mention to you all in the morning, um, that's affecting, uh, the street and sanitation department, uh. I know you all may have heard, um, yesterday evening, uh, and this morning, where Greater Birmingham Mans Society, uh, made an announcement that they, uh, going to be on priority Wednesday, it's up until, uh, August the thirty-first, uh. We actually got first note, we were actually first notified on last Tuesday, August the tenth, uh, from, um, Allison Blackwone, there's the executive officer of our Greater Birmingham Mans Society. And what priority, uh, Wednesday, this means is that, uh, right now, we're in a situation where, um, they're not going to be accepting any animals at the, um, Mans Society, or except for those animals that may be creating nuisance such as, uh, aggressive type dog, um, a sick animal or something like that. If it's not a dog, then these dead criteria right there, we're not even going to be able to pick them up. So, um, right now, we are, um, trying to know for all of our citizens, I'm quite sure you all may be hearing from citizens as well, as the mayor offices, I'm sure. Uh, citizens are getting upset about the fact that we're telling them that we cannot come out and do anything when they want to surrender a dog, or we can't even come out and respond to things like stray animals in the neighborhood. Unless that dog is aggressive or sickly, we can't even come out and do anything because there's nothing we can do with the animals. Um, as you all know, what we do with our animals, when we, uh, pick the animals up, we had to take them all to Greater Birmingham every single day. We don't house anything at the city of Bessemer. We haven't done so for quite a while now. So, our animals, our animal control officers go out, they patrol, when they pick animals up, but they, uh, surrender to us, or we pick them up strays, or pick up sick animals, or whatever. We take them all to Greater Birmingham and surrender them every single day. Right now, another problem that we have, uh, in my, uh, animal control service, that we're down now to only one animal control officer. You notice that we've been staffed for several years now for, had, for two officers, and right now, we only have one, um, trained animal control officer. We do have someone that's out there trying to assist. We're providing the service, trying to assist that, uh, officer, we're providing service, but what I need for everyone to understand is that, um, you know, when you're dealing with something like animal control, you know, you have to be careful about putting someone in that particular type of situation, you know, that has not been properly trained or not certified to go out there and, um, try to apprehend an animal, or, or try to treat, or capture, or hurt animal or something like that. They could get hurt, you know, so, uh, our officers are certified, they've been to all types of different training and stuff, so, um, so right now, we're in a situation where if this officer is, uh, off of work for whatever reason, um, or can't go out on half an hour call, or whatever, we sort of going to be in a situation where we're going to be at a disadvantage, I mean, um, because we won't have, uh, like experienced officer to go, so we may have to try to, uh, and it's going to be kind of difficult for us to even, uh, go to Greater Birmingham, call, try to assist those, because, uh, them being on this priority Wednesday, where, uh, most, like, almost all of their animal control officers, officers, most all of the animal control staff is, uh, currently out because of COVID nineteen concerns, so, uh, we're going to be in a real, real bad situation for, um, at least a couple more weeks, and I just, uh, want everyone to try to understand that we're going to, as we can, and try to continue to provide service for the citizens of Bessemer, but, uh, we will be, uh, kind of disadvantaged because of what's going on in Greater Birmingham, because of us being short-staffed in our animal control department. So I want to make sure that all of you are aware of it. So, um, before I move any further, do you have any questions about, um, this where the Birmingham Mans Society priority Wednesday?
Mr. Hatter, how long does the status last, or have they said how long this status will last?
I talked to, uh, uh, Ms. Allison, I missed, uh, Blackwone, he's on yesterday, and, uh, and of course, the press release today had on yesterday, says it's going to be up until, um, August the thirty-first. They got a fourteen-day quarantine period that they're going through right now. So, after, uh, after August the thirty-first, we should have some kind of idea whether or not they're going to be able to reopen. Whether or not they're going to be able to start back accepting animals at that time. I mean, they may reopen and not even start back accepting animals, I have no idea, but I'm going to stay in close contact with her, so I know closely to that date. I mean, I'm sure I know whether or not they're going to start back accepting, um, accepting animals at their time on August the thirty-first.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Counselor Crusoe.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Hatter, uh, for that presentation. So with your expertise, um, dealing with this, what other alternatives or suggestions do you, um, render to us? As far as then, for the need of our, of our citizens, um, because we have, you know, a lot of complaints, you know, you know, throughout the week about stray animals, I mean, as you heard it, uh, in our, um, in our planning session, so what do you, uh, recommend or, or, um, suggest, well, as far as, um, for, uh, an alternative measure?
Yes, ma'am, Counselor Crusoe, uh, right now, at this time, uh, you know, like I said earlier, we are still going to be responding to those strays that may be aggressive, uh, you know, creating a problem for our citizens, but we still will respond to those animals and try to apprehend those, and, uh, and Birmingham, Greater Birmingham, we'll accept those type bounds. But if it's just a stray animals that is not, uh, causing any type of threat to, uh, uh, our citizens, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do anything at this time because we have no way of housing them, but Greater Birmingham not accepting them. And also, um, another thing that we probably would be hearing in the coming days, uh, very soon is that we will be hearing word from other animal control facilities in the area where they may be doing the exact same thing that Greater Birmingham is doing. Because I can't release the names of those facilities or whatever right now, but, you know, when I talked to, um, um, Ms. Blackwone, he's on yesterday, asked her, and she said, well, Lawrence, she said, unfortunately, she said, the other facilities around here that's able to house the animals, um, they're running to the same problem we have, where they have a problem with their employees being affected with COVID. Because Greater Birmingham right now, they're, uh, sending their animals out of state, they're going to, uh, Wisconsin, uh, someone to, uh, Georgia. They're sending somebody, I think it's maybe fifty to, um, uh, fifty animals out to, uh, Wisconsin and fifty to Georgia on this week. So it's going to be a problem for not just, um, the city of Bessemer, but for all, uh, local municipalities and, uh, for, uh, other providers like Jefferson County and Birmingham as well, uh. So, um, hopefully this will be over really soon, because I know, know that's a stray, uh, animal problem in the city of Bessemer, but, uh, and I know this does not help, but right now, unfortunately, there's nothing we can do, but I will stay in contact with, uh, Greater Birmingham Mans Society, and, uh, hopefully they can provide me some type of alternative that we can use until, uh, they can go back online and start accepting animals.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hatter. Any other counselor?
Uh, Mr. Hatter. Uh, this is just, this is just a question. Uh, if you have a, uh, animal that's, uh, being abused or tied up, do you all still consider that, you know, if it's malnutrition, you consider that to be up on the sick, or, or wouldn't be up under that dozy outlines?
Yes, sir. Um, in a situation where, uh, animals being mistreated, uh, they may cause, uh, you know, uh, they may be mistreated, we will go out and, uh, address that situation. Man, we'd accept, uh, animals under those circumstances, you know, uh, because it affects the animals' physical well-being, we will go out and, uh, they will take those animals in.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, okay, um, Madam President, if I could, just a couple of more things I want to mention, uh, quickly.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, I have been, um, in conversations with the mayor, and the mayor, uh, he has been very good about trying, uh, you know, providing us with the things that we need at the street and sanitation department, uh. But one of the issues that we have in there, I know we're not unlike anyone else, you know, throughout the nation, that we have, uh, a whole lot of problems with staffing right now. And the problems that we're having with staffing is, is beginning to affect our performance down here. We haven't crews, never, we haven't sent out with, uh, you know, just one driver and one person, you know, and our crews typically have like maybe four or five people to a particular truck. Right now, throughout our entire department, uh, with twenty-nine employees short, there's twenty-nine laborers short, you know, laborers are the people that actually go out and, uh, they're the hands-on people, they actually go out and perform the fiscal work every single day, you know, they're the backbone of this department. And twenty-nine in labor short, there's a whole lot of, uh, you know, people that we're short of, you know, it's fifty-eight hands, if you want to look at it that way. We don't have out there performing, uh, work that we need done on a daily basis. And on top of that, we also have eighteen classified positions, you know, our classified position, you know, the people that go out and drive the truck, you know, to operate the equipment and, uh, uh, and things such as that. So totally, we have a total of forty-second vacant, uh, positions in the, uh, in the department down here. And, you know, and, um, like I mentioned a moment ago, the mayor has been good about sending us, uh, people down here to, uh, interview and, uh, and try to hire. But the problem is that, uh, you know, when we get these people down here now, you know, and they may send us, like, if I send requests and saying, you know, we need twenty-five people, uh, I think Ms. Heron and the mayor's office tried to get those twenty-five employees to come down. And she have a very difficult time. If she send me a na, send me a list of maybe twenty, twenty-five names, I'll be lucky if ten of them even show up, uh, ten, fifteen even show up, and now that ten to fifteen, I consider, I mean, I, I'll be even more surprised if I have ten of them to even pass the, uh, pre-employment requirements that we have in place, whether it's draw, screen, fiscals, or, or whatever, you know, so and then when we do get those people, and, you know, we have, I'm sure we are more turnover than anybody in the, uh, in the department in the city of Bessemer. I'm quite sure that this year alone, we probably had, um, whether people were resigned, or, uh, retired, or were terminated, or what the case may be, you know, we probably had like maybe sixty to, maybe at least fifty to sixty people that we lost just this year alone. You know, we have people that come down here, sometimes when I do the interviews, uh, the guys or the young ladies come down for the interviews, uh, when I start telling them, I say, you know, this is our starting rate, we started off at ten dollars and fifty cents, ten dollars and fifty cents an hour. The people just get up and walk out. You know, I had to have a meeting with the entire department yesterday morning, speaking to the drivers and employees, because, you know, morale has got so bad down here. And as my supervisors said, having such a difficult time, you know, they tell these people, well, I need you to do this, and I need you to do that, I need you to cut this grass, I need you to get in this ditch, I need you to go in this garbage truck. People just start telling, employees just start telling, I'm not doing it. I mean, y'all don't pay me enough for that. You know, so I'm having to send them home and basically just terminate them for refusing to do as they instructed to do. You know, so, um, and what we are trying to do, we are trying our best to keep these people down, and we have a problem with people coming to work, they won't come to work. So we got a problem with attendance, uh, we got a problem with people doing what we ask them to do. And we have been trying our best to retain these people, we're trying to work with them, talk to them, call them in, and encourage them, try to get them to do the things that we need them to do. Then as a last resort, we have to let them go, because we just can't have people coming to say what they're not going to do, and have people that's coming to work maybe two, three days out of a week, you know, so I just want to make sure that councilors aware, I'm, I know that you all send requests in now, you know, you know, we try our best to get to those requests, our citizens call every single day, you know, with requests, you know, want us to do certain things, uh, you know, but I just want you all to know firsthand from me exactly what's going on down here. We also have an issue with, um, with equipment, you know, when things break down now, you know, it's not just the street department, it's all over the country, and when things break down, you know, the garage, they are good about trying to get our stuff out of the shop, but, um, they can't even get parts for stuff. We got a brand new truck, trash truck, we just bought this year. It stayed in this shop over two years, it's, uh, uh, Madam President's in your district, you know, this is a brand new truck we bought, uh, that sit above your district. That truck stayed in the shop almost two months because we couldn't get parts for a brand new truck, I mean, so, because I guess the parts manufacturer having problems as well. We got more since maybe three or four years old, almost new that we can't get parts for, so that's an ongoing problem, you know, we're, uh, trying to get things fixed, it's not because the shop not doing they supposed to do, because they are, the things that they can't get fixed, they can't get fixed quickly, they're sent out. We have stuff to sit on for, for a month or two because they can't get parts in from, uh, from the parts companies or whatever, uh, so it's just a difficult situation that this department is in, and I just want to make sure I come before you all, and that you all know what's going on down here, so, uh.
And, Madam, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and you know, uh, I, um, I, I, I kind of just wanted to add to the fact that, um, that yes, uh, we are expen, we're experiencing the same label issues that we see uh, 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 all around, uh, Jefferson County, the state of Alabama, and so in, in America, when you see all of these, uh, uh, now hiring signs, uh, we are now hiring yourself too. But, uh, uh, unfortunately, what we, what we do run into, and we're, we're going to have to revisit it some particular time, as a laborer, our starting salary ends up is ten fifty. Well, uh, you have places like Dollar Journal and Amazon, they're starting individuals out, you know, at anywhere from sixteen to twenty dollars an hour. Uh, and starting out at ten fifty, uh, we're just, we're having a very, very difficult time retaining and so, uh, employers, I mean, employees, and so at that particular and so price, so, you know, uh, uh, when we get a lot of the complaints, it's not that we neglecting, and so we, uh, uh, we, we are doing the best that we can, and we're asking, and so for the citizens' patience, and so we, you know, that we are getting to the issues, but we are short-staffed. So, uh, uh, I did want Mr., uh, Hatter to come and speak and sub to that, because it's a real, it's a real problem. It's a real problem that we have, uh, uh, in, in maintaining enough employees, uh, uh, in the street and sanitation to do what we are, what, what the citizens have been accustomed to us doing when it comes to so to the maintaining of the city. Thanks. Thank you.
Madam Chair. I yield to Counselor Matthews.
Counselor Matthews.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, uh, Mayor, I appreciate that, because I've been telling some citizens the exact, uh, presentation that Mr., uh, Mr. Hatter made, and what you just, uh, alluded to about the wages that our, uh, employees starting out with. And of, of course, they can go to other places and make more money, and, you know, you can't follow them, you know. And, and I guess a question to you, and, uh, uh, I guess into, for you to make mention, have you all, the mayors, uh, at the mayors association, have you all, have you all had some dialogue about this too? And I think I mentioned in one of the other meetings, uh, uh, it needs to be a wage increase. And what is the Jefferson County, uh, take on a wage increase? I guess that's the bottom line.
Um, mayor's assistant, uh, discussion, uh, we have not, we have not in some discussions of the, uh, uh, labor concerns, uh, and I would guess probably because, um, not all, not, you know, our, our cities are uniquely different, so our problems are uniquely different.
Of course.
Uh, uh, but, uh, as far as, um, the, um, uh, the salaries for, um, uh, for our, uh, employees and so as well, I mean, as far as laborers, uh, all of that's going to have to be re, looked at and revamped and so from the Jefferson County Personnel Board, because just to arbitrarily increase it, then you and so would, uh, increase their salary to more than the Personnel Board, uh, salary for skilled workers, and that's where the Personnel Board start at, and so is, is skilled laborers. So, you know, uh, we have had discussions with, uh, with the Jefferson County Personnel Board, uh, concerning, looking at the complete structure and so, because, uh, right now, it's just, it's so competitive is out there, i- and unless we find a way and so to change that complete structure, you, you, you know, there's no way that you're going to be able to retain laborers.
And I guess on the downside, there may be, uh, uh, possibility of the cities that in the same or similar situation, maybe some contracted, con, contracted labors or something.
Well, Counselor Matthews, you make a very valid point. At some particular point, we may have to just look and so at that. But, but when you're speaking of, uh, uh, situations when it comes to the mayors, uh, Jefferson County Mayor's Association, uh, uh, a great deal in some of those municipalities are not under the Jefferson County Personnel Board and so anyway, so they can, they can arbitrarily flex pay uh, uh, their labors any amount they want to. It's the structure that we are operating under that prevents us from saying, okay, I'm going to start you out at fifteen dollars an hour, start you out in so at sixteen dollars an hour, because we are structured under the Jefferson County Personnel Board, a lot of those other municipalities are not. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Uh, one moment, Counselor Alexander. Thank, uh, go ahead, go ahead, I'll, I'll go with you.
Um, Mayor Gully, so all our street and sanitation department workers are under the personnel department?
No, ma'am, uh, only, only the, the laborers, uh, in each department, not just the street and sanitation department, if they're laborers throughout the city, they would not be under the Jefferson County Personnel Board.
Do you know what percentage we have that's not up under the, the Personnel Board of employees?
No, I would not have that, that, that information.
Also, to Mr. Hatter, I know you, I heard you say that the morale is low. Uh, what, what are we doing? What, what are some of the supervisors doing, the department head is doing, to kind of correct the morale, to bring it up? Um, if I was an employee, I wouldn't want to make ten dollars and fifty cents an hour either, it's been some hot summer days. Um, like Mayor said, can we, we probably need to go back to the drawing board, to look across the board at other municipalities, to see what they're offering their skilled laborers and their laborers, so we can kind of, uh, be in, in, in cahoots with them, uh, as far as our employees and to retain some employees, because I do get stopped on the street a lot. Not just meet other council members as well, and they talk about the ten dollars and fifty cents, and they tell me, well, I can go to Amazon, I can go to McDonald's, they paying twelve dollars a hour, or they talk about, uh, you know, the morale, like you said, so, um, are we trying to do anything to keep the morale, do, uh, have we thought of any incentive or anything?
Uh, yeah, Counselor Alexander, uh, and first of all, you are exactly right, I mean, uh, that's another problem that we've had, that we have around here, you know, uh, first, we had issue with the containment rain, which caused, uh, across the, caused the grass to just grow, 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 and grow out of hand, you know, so, uh, that was a grand problem, that we couldn't keep the grass cut because it was growing so fast because of some of the rain. And then we go to the heat and the humidity, because now rain is extremely hot out there. When you're thinking about being at the cutting grass with a weighty to hang on your back, it's a hundred degrees, a hundred degrees plus the humidity, and you want to make it ten thousand fifty cents an hour? I mean, it's kind of hard to go out there and try to push somebody and encourage them to work at a faster pace and stuff like that. As far as some of the things that we try to do to, uh, encourage our employees, of course, we try, like I said a few minutes ago, you know, I've tried my best to try not to, uh, suspend or terminate people unless they just push us in a corner where we almost have to. Just maybe a month or so, I paid for it in my own pocket, I had an employee picnic. Just maybe a month or so, I paid for it in my own pocket, I had an employee picnic down here just fine.
Yeah, I heard about the barbecue.
Yeah, yeah, I paid for that and they just fire employees, just to let them know that we really appreciate them, we know, know that the, what they do for us down here, it's great, it's greatly appreciated, you know, uh, so we try to do that for them, uh. And other things we try to do, try, we didn't increase their lunch break, we let them take as fif- as fifteen minutes for lunch, uh, we don't say anything to them about, you know, getting in the shade and resting or whatever out there. We don't do anything about that, uh, but, I mean, other than that, you know, there's not too much more that I can do, you know, than just trying to talk to them and trying to be understanding, you know, try to always offer them a word or encourage me, you know, but uh, you know, but uh, uh, i- it's just difficult, you know, uh, um, and uh, even with, you know, another issue we get is the garbage service, you know, the guys on the garbage truck makes twelve thousand seven thirty cents an hour to start, but those people, I mean, if a person, I mean, I really can't even explain the, the uh, the type of work that those guys on the garbage truck do, I mean, that's an extremely difficult job, and I think this, we're running into most of our problems that is trying to stop the garbage truck, because it's, no, it's so, uh, that's such a hard task to perform on a daily basis, you know, and uh, you know, it's just hard to get people to go out there and do that type of work, even for twelve thousand seven thirty cents an hour, I mean, it's, it's almost impossible. In our department, uh, we have a total of, we're, we're supposed to have a total of ninety-four uh, laborers, so we budgeted for ninety-four laborers. There's four to six in the street department and, and uh, four to eight in the, four to six in the sanitation department, and four to eight in the street department, a total of ninety-four laborers down here, when we full of staff.
You know, um, Madam President, a- 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 and I do want to add and so this, yes, uh, uh, we do have uh, uh, label, uh, uh, concerns and issues, uh, but as I fore stated, this is, this uh, we can't just arbitrarily, we have to work through the Personnel Board and so to do that, you just can't arbitrarily just raise uh, um, you, you know, the salaries, because then uh, uh, laborers will be paying more than, be 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 getting paid more than folks that's actually under the uh, the umbrella of the Jefferson County Personnel Board. But I also like to add this and so as well, and some that we did, obviously, when uh, you know, uh, uh, when we became mayor in two thousand ten, you know, we hired and so a lot of and so for people that and so they cannot go in some other places, you know, we hire and so convicted felons, you know, and it's always been uh, my, uh, my position that wants a person pay their debts to society, that you are not, uh, continue to punish that person and so forever, they pay their debt. Lot of other municipalities and a lot, a lot of other companies and so won't hire and so convicted and so felons. But and so, you know, we do that, we give people and so a chance, we give people and so an opportunity to rebuild their lives. So it's a, it's a lot of benefits that we do give and so that others and some municipalities do not. But we'll have to look up, look at the structure of the Jefferson County Personnel Board, sit down with Personnel Board, and see how they can structure it so we can and so make sure that I, our um, uh, uh, make sure that, 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 that our laborers are compensated and so greater, but they're, they're gonna have to um, revamp the complete scale in order and so to do that.
And I want to add that Birmingham do have that no checkbox rule, so I think they do hire convicted felons as well. But yes, Mayor, can we please get with the Personnel Board to see what we can do for our employees as far as the race? Thank you.
Thank you so much, um, Mayor Gillis and Mr. Hatter, I'm glad that you came forward and, and informed us on what is going on, because my district, uh, District Three shows that that um, that truck has been down. And I think I called you and I spoke with you and you did tell me what was going on. But I tell you what really is disheartening, uh, Mayor and, and, and Mr. Lawrence Hatter, is when you call and you get such a nasty attitude, until you don't want to call back again, but you need to call and maybe remind someone. Um, that it has been two, three weeks, just a hypothetical situation, two or three weeks. Mr. Alfred Moore, and he doesn't mind me calling his name, behind his house has not been cut in three years. And he, he called down, he said five to six times, but he got such a nasty response when he called, until he did not want to call back. So I'm asking if, as soon as possible, if we can get someone in that ditch right there off of Fairfax Alley and Twenty-seventh Street to cut that ditch, it runs from uh, Fairfax to Exeter. Uh, if we can get somebody there to uh, do something in that ditch, because it is, it has come over his fence into his garden, and he is um, trying to do what he can to cut. But I surely thank you for coming forward and letting us know what is going on, so that we can properly inform our um, citizens in our prospective districts. Thank you, councilors, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Hatter.
Thank you.
Um, item number six, please.
Yes, ma'am, uh, Councilor Collier arrived at the City Council meeting at eleven ten a.m.
Thank you so much.
Item six is committee reports.
Councilors, are there any committee reports? If not, item number seven, please.
Granted extensions, list attached.
Ms. Hall, are you on the line?
Ms. Hall? Good morning, everyone, I am.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm only a first, thank you.
Council, do you see your extensions? Any questions that are concerned? If not, I need a motion.
Madam Chair, can we consent this item?
Yes, sir, you can.
Excuse me, are we in pre-council meeting?
We can't consent this item, um. Councilor Marshall, I'm sorry, we cannot, we are in council meeting, or we can actually vote on this item.
Okay, alright. You're right.
I need a motion and a second, please.
We don't. Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Are we on the uh, there's no one, there's no one in the chamber, right? That's correct.
Let me make sure I can walk.
Well, we, we've got one gentleman, I, I don't know what his um, business is.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know you were there, okay.
Yeah, he's, he's part number eight, I believe, item eight.
I think he may be eight, but this is for granted extension, I need the most.
Right.
Now we'll, the extensions, please.
I move to grant the extension.
Exactly.
Has been properly moved in second, that we will grant the, the, the extensions, Miss, Miss Taylor.
Council Alexander.
Hi.
Councilor Collier. Councilor Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Dick Pan.
Aye.
Council Matthews. Council Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you so much, item number six.
Uh, item eight, did you say item eight?
Item array, please.
Okay, July sixth, twenty twenty-one, weed nuisance status report, this is a hearing.
Is there anyone in the, the council chambers that's here, because you received a notice for your overgrown property?
Yes.
So, please, uh, give us your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
My first name is Vivas, V as in Victor, I, V as in Victor, U S. Last name Darwin, D as in David, O R W I N. And I own the house at seven oh four Avenue H, Bessemer three five zero two zero. Okay, and I'm, I'm already in process of cleaning up the property, the front yard is almost done, and beginning next week when I have some uh, my paycheck in, I'll hire a team to come finish up the rest of it. I've had two hospitalizations till, since June, and I'm disabled with emphysema, so it's kind of hard in ninety-degree weather to work.
Is that District Seven?
I'm not sure.
Council Alexander, I'm sorry, Council Crusoe, is that District Seven? So you're asking for an extension?
Please, if you wouldn't mind.
Madam Chair. I have no problem with the. He, he, he's asking for an extension for what timeframe again?
I should have it done by the end of next week.
So about, um, a ten-day uh, extension would be sufficient for you, um, Mr. Darwin?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Darwin.
Thank you.
Seven oh four.
Avenue H.
H. Is requesting a ten-day extension. Need a motion in a second, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Hall on item seventeen, eighteen, and thirty-four. Those properties owners are requesting a thirty-day extension, please.
Seventeen. Seventeen, eighteen, and thirty-four, what?
Yes, ma'am, seventeen, number eighteen, and number thirty-four.
Eight. How long is, how long is, um, eighteen asking for?
Each one is asking for thirty days.
Because the grass is already in, almost in the road there.
Well, on number seventeen and number eighteen, um, I did receive an email from Mr. Whiteley, he has been contracted to render grass cutty service on the old I-house.
Okay. Mr. Whiteley will be cutting that grass.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have no problem with that. I need a motion to include seven, seventeen, eighteen, and thirty-four, please. I need a motion to include seven, seventeen, eighteen, and thirty-four, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move number, how, how, how long was number seven? Was it ten days or two weeks?
It was ten days.
Ten days for number seven, uh.
Thirty days for.
Thirty days for the seven, seventeen, eighteen, and thirty-four.
Four, yes, sir.
I move that.
In a second, please.
Madam Chair. Council Matthews.
Yes.
Can you include the other, um, no action and completes and cut by owners?
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was just dealing with, and uh.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, yeah, and uh, yeah, cut the no action, uh, abate the uh, uh, the ones that have been cut by own.
In a second, I go along with that.
Probably move in second. That we will cut and abate short items. So we'll give item number seven, thirty day, uh, ten days, seventeen, eighteen, and thirty-four, thirty-four days. Council roll call, Miss Taylor.
Council Alexander.
Aye.
Council Collier. Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Dick Pan.
Aye, and clarify that seventeen, eighteen, and thirty-four are thirty days, not thirty-four days.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Council Matthews.
Aye, in thirty days, thank you, Council.
Council Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, we, uh, item number nine, please.
Item nine, August tenth, twenty twenty-one, weed nuisance report, set hearing date.
Ms. Hall.
Yes, ma'am, I'm with the Council approval, I would like to request the hearing date be set for September the twenty-first. The third, Tuesday, September, which is September twenty-first at ten a.m.
That's nine twenty-one, ten a.m. Councilors.
Go ahead.
Move just at the hearing date.
Yes. Need a second.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second that the hearing date for the weed nuisance report will be nine twenty-one, twenty-one at ten a.m. Roll call, please.
Council Alexander.
Aye.
Council Collier. Council Collier.
Aye.
Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Dick Pan.
Aye.
Council Matthews. Council Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, let us add, um, nine A at the Chamber of Commerce. The resolution for allocating funds appropriated from the general for their resolution in support of Bessemer Area Chamber of Commerce for Marvel City Family Fun Fest. That'll be nine A. Nine B will be at nonprofit advertisement starting September one. And Attorney Peyton will get that resolution to us as soon as possible.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move, um, the approval of item nine A.
Second.
Properly moved.
We need to look, oh.
Second, that the resolution supporting the Bessemer Area Chamber of Commerce, voice Marvel City, uh, excuse me, Family Fun Feast. Um, roll call, Miss Taylor.
Council Alexander.
Aye.
Council Collier.
Aye.
Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
And it's not a feast. At least it were a feast.
Yes.
Aye, aye.
Council Dick Pan.
Yes, aye.
I'm thinking about.
Council Matthews.
Yeah.
Uh, a feast.
Council Donald. Aye, food, seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, item number nine B, at nonprofit to be advertised September one, twenty twenty-one, and the goal of duration.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move item nine B.
Second.
Been properly moved and second that nonprofit will be re-advertised starting September one, twenty twenty-one. Excuse me, roll call, please.
Council Alexander.
Aye.
Madam President, hey, this is Chan, can I interrupt y'all one second? That resolution we sent over had a blank in it. That needs to be completed, we put in there that we would advertise it for four successive weeks. But then that they had, had blank number of weeks to get their applications in, so what, what period did y'all want to put in there?
That was a period of four weeks.
Right, we advertised for four weeks, and then how long after they advertised do they have to submit the application?
Miss Taylor, Miss Taylor.
Yes.
Answer that, please.
Um, it was supposed to be for October the second at five o'clock P.M.
Well, we're advertising for four weeks through October the second, what deadline do you want to put now, since it's, the advertising goes through October second?
Is it not September one to October the second?
Right, that's the publication, that's the advertising period, it's those four weeks. And then there needs to be a period, they need to have a deadline to submit their application by.
Mad- Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember if we gave two to three weeks after the, um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember if we gave two to three weeks after the, um, um, you know, the advertising deadline ran. I thought it was two, two to three weeks.
I think it's about two weeks.
Okay.
So if that's the case, it would be by October the seventeenth. Could we fill that blank in with October the, let me look at the date real quick. October, uh, they would have it in by October the seventeenth would be a Sunday at five. Do you want that to be the deadline to submit applications?
Can we do October the eighteenth?
All right, October eighteenth at five.
That'd be good.
All right, so I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Roll call, Ms. Taylor. Council Alexander.
Aye.
Council Carter.
Aye.
Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Dick Penn.
Aye.
Council Matthews.
Aye.
Council Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Um, item number ten, please.
Approval of liquor license for seafood Bessemer, Inc., Juicy Seafood at Fifty Twenty Academy Lane, Bessemer, Alabama, three five zero two two.
Council, you, you read your. Resolution. To grant Juicy's a liquor license.
Madam Chair. I move the, uh, I move to approve the liquor license with Juice, Seafood Bessemer, Inc.
Second.
It has been properly motioned in second that we will, um, give Juicy the authorization to have alcohol on the premises. Ms. Taylor.
Council Alexander.
Aye.
Council Carter.
Aye.
Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Dick Penn.
Aye.
Council Matthews.
Aye.
Council Donald.
Aye, something other than that water.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number eleven, please.
Public hearing to rezon the property located at four fifteen Murphy's Lane from R two vacant line, vacant land to R three residential subdivision.
Council Marshall, is there anyone in the council chambers here for and or against?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Um, on the line, uh, I have the developer, Mr. Randy Brooks. If anyone have any questions for the developer.
Mr. Brooks.
Madam Chair, no one in, in the chamber.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
What district will this be going in?
Uh, Mur- Murphy's Lane is of his in District Six.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, ma'am, it's just gonna be just briefly, um, Mr. Brooks, would you kind of explain the, uh, boundaries, uh, it's right across. It's a very unique piece of property that's, uh, uh, down from McNeil School across the bridge that kind of loops in behind. And I guess Mr. Brooks can explain it, uh, explain it from, uh, from a developer standpoint. Mayor, will you, you let him explain that, but?
Yeah, Mr. Brooks, are you on the line? Hello?
Hello, Mr. Brooks, are you on the line? Mr. Math- Council Matthews, is Mr. Brooks on the line?
No, no. He should be on the line, uh, I don't know unless he got disconnected. Ron, Ron, uh, I mean, uh, Daniel, are you on the line?
Yes, sir, mayor, I'm here.
Okay, you, you want to speak to, uh, to this, uh, development a little bit, uh? I had Mr. uh, uh, Brooks on the line, but I guess he got disconnected.
Yes, sir, I can. Um, this development is right, um, at the very edge of the city of Bessemer at four fifteen Murphy's Lane. Uh, it's about, roughly about sixty acres and they're proposing, uh, about two hundred and thirty-nine lots. They're going from R two zoning to R three A garden home zoning. And that's, uh, that, that's pretty much it. If you have any additional questions, just let me know.
Uh, yes, Daniel, I have additional question, Madam Chair, is it okay?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Who owns this property? Does the city of Bessemer own it or is this an investor's property?
This is a developer. It's not the city of Bessemer.
Okay. And I saw down in the pipe shop area, it's a flooding zone, so that's not a flooding zone?
Uh, no, ma'am, this, this area here is at the very, uh, is not what I consider pipe shop. You go, you go down past McNeil, I guess it turns from thirteenth street, I think, to Murphy's Lane.
Right.
And you go on down there and there's a four-way stop and it's the property, if you're going toward Huey Town, it's the property on the left, right before that four-way. It's a bank, it's just a bank.
And will we, will we advertise to these homeowners that this will be, uh, Bessemer property? So it won't be sub, uh, it won't be, uh, zoned into Huey Town's property, right?
No, this is, this is, this is in the Bessemer city limit.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma- Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, Council Donald, I, I, I went down and, and canvassed that area. I've been knowing it for quite some, all my life, really. And it's, when you cross the bridge going into Huey Town, you could, you could go to this four-way stop sign. And, uh, you go on through the stop sign and it's a big tree line, you can't even see it. You could go on down where my, my, my father used to hunt back in there. And then if you could look through that clearing, it sits above the pipe shop community. And, uh, therefore, from a flooding standpoint, it is no, this is not in the flood zone. Because you go through the city of Huey Town and it, that property that loops around behind Huey Town and connects with Bessemer. So it's a, it's a unique, unique, uh, part of the land that's connected to the city of Bessemer.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I was, that was one of my questions too about the flooding. So I pulled up the flood zone map and there's like two inches over in the bottom right-hand corner of the plot. That might be in, that might touch the flood zone, but the rest of it is all green. It's all good. So, but that was, I was thinking about that too, because I knew Murphy's, Murphy's Lane in that area has a tendency to flood. My question is just to make sure that it doesn't cause flooding problems for others. But I don't think, looking at the map, I don't think it would. And, uh, Daniel might could verify that. I don't think there's any way, anything that they're doing that would cause it to flood and turn the water off on somebody else.
Uh, that's correct, uh, Council Thick Penn, they'll have to do, uh, you know, good sound engineering practices where the post, post runoff will not exceed the pre-runoff. So there shouldn't be any more water leaving the site than it was before. And then I'd like to add to the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission did favorably recommend this for approval as well.
Thank you.
Daniel, do you know about how much those houses will start off at?
Uh, no, ma'am, I don't with the current market. I, I, I think that'd be a question for Mr. Brooks. I, you know, with the current market status of the lumber and all that, I, I would, I would hate to guess at that right now, Council Donald.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Initially, um, uh, I, I would, I would have to agree and so with Daniel. But initially, the prices of those homes were ranging from two twenty-five to two seventy-five.
I'd like to hear that. Thank you so much, um, Marco.
And I, I did get a call from Mr. Brooks and he said that he couldn't, uh, he, he, uh, he couldn't get on, so.
Well, I think, uh, counselors, are there any more questions and or concerns?
Madam Chair. This is Tom Harmon with Building Department.
Yes, sir.
Uh, if I may speak before the council goes.
Go ahead.
The Building Department has advertised the rezoning of this property before the Planning and Zoning Commission, like state law requires. We heard no opposition whatsoever from anyone, either in writing or petition or phone call or visit. So thus far, to the best of our knowledge, there's been no opposition to this rezoning.
Uh, Madam President, I'd like, um, to make a correction and so as well. Mr. Brooks is listening and he just, he just gave me a correction. And the price of the homes would be from two, two fifteen to two fifty.
Fifteen to fifty. Thank you so much, Mr. Brooks.
Madam Chair.
Aye, yes, sir.
Uh, did we have anyone in the, in the chamber?
No, sir, there's no one there and or for and or against. So we'll go to item number twelve, please.
Item twelve is the ordinance to rezon the property located at four fifteen Murphy's Lane from R two vacant, vacant land to R three residential subdivision.
May I have a motion to consider?
Madam Chair, I would move that we consider, uh, item twelve to, uh, rezon the property located at four fifteen Murphy's Lane from R two vacant land to R three residential subdivision.
Counselor, Counselor Donald, may I interject? It should be R three A.
Okay, well, I was going about whatever, okay.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to.
R three A.
What's the difference on, Daniel?
Um, R three, R three A is, is fifty foot wide lots, uh, in five thousand minimum square foot area. R three is sixty foot lot, seventy-five hundred square foot area. Just wanted to clear that up.
I amend in R three A, my motion.
And it did go before planning and zoning is in, for recommendation approval for R three A as well.
R three eight, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, I need second, please.
Second.
It's been properly moved that the properties at four fifteen Murphy's Lane will be, um, zoned R three A for residential subdivision. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Council Alexander.
Aye.
Council Carter.
Aye.
Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Dick Penn.
Aye.
Council Matthews. Council Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Council Marsh.
Go ahead, Council Marsh.
I moved the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we adopt the ordinance rezoning the property at four fifteen Murphy's Lane. Roll call, please.
Council Alexander.
Aye.
Council Carter.
Aye.
Council Crusoe.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Council Dick Penn.
Aye.
Council Matthews.
Aye.
Council Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, please.
Bessemer Historic Commission nominations.
Counselor, if you have a packet, Bessemer Historic nomination. Am I correct in saying these are from Mayor Gully or recommendations from Strada? Mayor Gully?
Madam President, that is correct. Those are my recommendations to the, uh, council or my approved. The Historical Commissioner, um, obviously is a, uh, uh, is, is a mayor, is the mayor's and so of, uh, appointment. So, um, that's my recommendation. It has to be confirmed through the city council. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask Mayor Gully, who will be the blocks representative? You only put blocks down. Who will be their representative?
Uh, I saw Ms. Akoff and so on the phone. I'm gonna have her and so to speak to that, that recommendation and so, uh, ask you the way they going and so to do blocks and so came and so from, uh, 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 came from Strada recommendations of the name.
Uh, good morning, counsel. How y'all doing?
Morning, how are you?
All right, how are you?
I'm doing great. Uh, you looking at the Architect Review Board? That has not been approved. That was just a recommendation to come along later. Uh, that's the last page and Blocks was on there just as, as the commission, uh, we kind of jumped ahead and we just give them some recommendation ahead of time. So what you sent on there, that's just one thing. It's not necessarily that would be chosen. That's on the last page. Uh, think of y'all thing, uh, something, some ideas and things that we sent out to mayor. So that's why Blocks was there. And, uh, what, and, and also, uh, we put it down because the Alabama Historic Commission recommend that Blocks be on, uh, works because Blocks is in Bessemer and they have worked with Blocks before on historic, uh, resources in Mobile, Alabama. And I've got a couple of, of parts of Alabama and they said since Blocks is right here in Bessemer, Bessemer has a great resource. I hope.
Madam Chair.
So when that time come, will y'all have a representative name? Because as of now, it's just saying Blocks.
Yes, we will. We will have to, uh, uh, we will have to work with them and talk with them and work. It really, the commission, we will work with the commission to help guide them through that process and make contacts with Blocks and talk with Blocks and see who they have someone to volunteer and prefer to be somebody one that volun- I mean volunteered. It's because it's a volunteer position. It's not a paid position. Um, uh, it would be someone that works for, maybe, uh, works for Blocks, maybe live in Bessemer. Because I think the last time we talked to Blocks, they are trying to get their employees to move to Bessemer. And they have a, a, a wealth, a source of architects on their team, which is great for Bessemer. And it really is like a plus for Bessemer, uh, to have such a well-known architect firm right here in Bessemer. But we will work with them.
Now I see on here where you have Sidney May live outside of Bessemer. Is there a reason we didn't get a person that lives in Bessemer for that position?
I think y'all looking at the wrong thing. We're not going to prove the Architect Review Board today, y'all. It's the first page. Sorry about that.
Okay.
It's the first page. Look at the very, uh, after the cover page, you should have a page there and that's the page y'all approving. And it should be Alice Royer, Ralph Hodge, uh, La Kenya Benz, um, um, uh, several people on there, um, that on there. That's the page y'all should be looking at.
Thank you.
Should be Ralph Ruggs. You said Ralph Hodge.
I'm sorry, Ralph. I'm sorry. I just met Mr. Hodge. I'm sorry.
No offense to Ralph Hodge, but no.
Well, no, but Ralph, I, I, I'm on the BZA with Ralph Hodge, so I'm sorry, y'all, uh, y'all met Mr. Hodge. I know he's a, really, uh, he's funny. So, uh, I just met with him. So, I'm sorry about that. Ralph Ruggs, uh, he's a planner and, uh, it's, it's the first page. Once you get past the cover, you see the first page. And we attach those people, uh, a little bit of their biography of what they're, what they bring to the table.
And is that the Mr. Wilson that came to, that, that comes to our council meeting now? Is that the Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
That's listed that comes to the council meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for the mayor. I mean, I know these came from Strada, but we don't have a representative from District Four.
Nor do we have.
Looks like everyone else.
Three. No, we don't have one from three.
Okay, I was just looking and I was like, there's not one for, for four.
That's not one for three as well.
May, may I, may I interject for one moment, uh, just to speak to that? Good morning, counsel. How is everyone doing today?
Good morning, um, Ms. George.
Well, I will, oh, my God, good afternoon. Uh, it's been a long day already.
Yes, it has.
Yeah.
Um, just, I just wanted to speak to that, the, the Historic Commission and, um, our, although we're not discussing the Arch- Architect Review Board at the moment. They have, uh, different qualifications and, um, that, that, that is why, why, uh, that is fit that way. So they have to either be living in a historic home or they have to be a historian, um, you know, be a historian or, or something like. They have to meet the qualification within the, the ordinance, the city ordinance.
or they have to be a historian, um, you know, be a historian or, or something like, they have to meet the qualification within the, the ordinance, the city ordinance. So that's why they're set like that. It's not, uh, to target a, you know, particular district or anything like that. We're just, we're trying to make sure that we had the people that qualified um, for the, for the actual commission itself. So thank you all.
They have to be a voter in the city of Besmer?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, ma'am. Each person that is, uh, that was, that we recommended to the mayor, they are, um, citizens of Besmer. But for the Architect Review Board, you don't have to be a citizen of Besmer, but you do have to have that background in architecture um, or engineering. And so that's why you see those recommendations, although we're not discussing them, uh, you know, that's not a, the, and, and the council has to actually, um, the, once, once the commission is set up, the commission has to bring, um, setting up the, the ARB or the Architecture Review Board before the council for that entity to even be set, set up again. So that, that is, that, you know, that, that's a whole different ballgame.
Like I was just.
Madam President.
Yes.
And, uh, 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 Counselor Thicke Pan, at, at the time that we sat down, we were discussing that, uh, you know, it's just like the Airport Board and, and plenty of other boards, I wasn't particularly trying and so to choose somebody from every single and so district. It was more about ends up the special skill or qualification that had an individual bought and so to, uh, 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 to the, um, you know, you know, to the board or to the position. So I wasn't just necessarily and so sitting down. That wasn't a criteria, just trying and so to find somebody from every sub-district, just like many boards don't have somebody and so from every single district.
Well, thank you, Mayor Gully. And there was one, I think it was one question I did ask, that they have to be a voter in Jefferson County and or the city of Besmer to be on this board.
Each one, um, we checked out from what we checked out. They are a voter in the city of Besmer. That was the question asked of each person. They are a voter in each person. We did check to see if they were registered voters for, for Besmer, uh, city of Besmer, you know, to vote in Besmer.
Uh, what special skills do the person that represent District Two bring to the board? I heard Mayor Gully said special skills. Everybody had different skills that they can bring to the board.
Are you talking about Ms. Alice Royal?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Yes, um, Ms. Alice Royal, she worked with the Housing Board before and she has some, um, she also live in her house in, 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 in Historic North Side. On how, uh, she lives in a historic, in a historic house. Their houses are over fifty years old. But also she's worked with the, um, Housing Authority before and has, uh, uh, a knowledge of the, uh, historic and, um, properties and stuff in her, in her, in her job that she had worked in.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that, uh, we accept the nominees presented by the mayor for the, um, restatement of Besmer Historic Commi- Commission.
Thanks.
Counselors, um, it has been properly motioned and seconded. We'll accept the nominations. Are there any discussions?
Madam President, this is Shan.
Yes, sir.
Qualification on this according to, this is the, under the Historic Preservation Commission sections. Is that right, Ms. Akoff?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So the code eleven sixty-eight dash three states that the terms, since basically you're reconstituting it, are to be staggered. So you'll have initially two members with one-year terms, two members, two members with two terms and three members with a three-year term. So does that make sense? Two with a one-year term, two with a two-year term, three with a?
All right, get back. So total of seven people, one, uh, two with one-year terms, two with two-year and two with, uh, three with three-year. How do we determine? How will we determine who gets?
I just.
But that would be the, again, that, that's the mayor's nomination for the spot, but what I would say is if you, and I'm not trying to protect in many particular order, but if you did, the first one in there, I say is Alice Royal, one-year term, unless I want to wait and do it later, but it'd be one-year term, Alice Royal, one-year term, Melanie Boyer, uh, two-year term, La Kenya, Chaney Ben, two-year term, William Craig.
We skipped over William Craig Ratley.
Yeah, right.
Open Shaw. We skipped over those people.
And I, I, in my book, I had Alice Royal, Melanie Boyer, La Kenya Chaney Ben, William Craig Ratley, Joseph M. Openshaw, Davis Edward Wilson Jr., Ralph D. Ruggs. Those were the ones I had. In that order.
They wasn't put in any specific order. I just put them in name and got the, they responded. So, um, I, I understand what you're saying. Um, and I would, um, like to take a, I'd like to see if the commissioner would meet and see if they really know the people that want to serve. Well, could you wait to do that after that? Um, it's a pain. Could we wait to, after that to see once, once the board is established?
No, ma'am, you have to, as part of the, you know, each person is a, appointed to a specific position. So, you know, like one through seven and that way you have them staggered. So they, they couldn't choose among themselves which one was going to start three, which one was going to start three.
So let me make that quick. Um, I would go with, um, uh, it's the mayor's decision how he would like them to stay in, but, um,
oh.
Yeah, I would like to.
My, my suggestion and so would, would be in the order that they are listed and so now, uh, to simplify, just go one year and, uh, with the first, first two, two years with the next two, so forth and so on.
Okay. Uh, let me move Mr. Wilson up and let him do one year. Okay, let me move him up and pull Craig down to, uh, a longer year. Can I replace, um, Wilson and Craig and re, uh, switch them out?
Yeah, that would, yeah, that would be fine.
Yeah.
Which?
Craig Ratley, uh, let himself serve the three years and Mr. Ralph Ruggs three years and move Mr. Wilson up to one year.
All right, so Mr. Ratley is three years.
Uh-huh.
And Wilson, Mr. Wilson is how many years?
One year. One. Alice Royal, Mr. William, Mr. Wilson, one year.
All right, hold on, make, let's, let's go through it. Just make sure we get it right. So we got Alice Royal is how many years?
One year.
One. All right, Miss Melanie Boyer.
Why don't you put Mr. uh, Edward Wilson, one year?
All right, Mr. Wilson will be one year.
Mm-hmm.
All right, who's two years? We need two years.
Give, uh, La Kenya Ben two years.
Okay.
Joe Openshaw, two years.
All right.
And Melly, uh, Boyer, two years.
Melanie Boyer would be how many years? I'm sorry?
Two.
I think we already have two, two years.
We have two, two years.
Okay, only one to be three years. That's what y'all saying? Only one to be three?
Only two.
Three, three years, two, two years, two, one year.
This, okay, you say three?
Three years.
Three, three years.
Three for three years? Okay. La Kenya Ben, Ralph Ruggs and Craig Ratley, three years.
You said Ruggs was three years? I'm sorry?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, so that's three years. All right, so how about Melanie Boyer? She would be a two-year?
Yes, sir.
Openshaw is a two years, is that correct?
Openshaw is a two-year. Okay, so I'm going to call them out and make sure we, let's see, I've got Alice Royal with one year. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Melanie Boyer with two years.
Yes, sir.
La Kenya Chaney Ben, three years.
Yes, sir.
William Craig, Craig Ratley with three years.
Yes, sir.
Joseph Openshaw, two years.
Yes, sir.
And Davis, Davis Edward Wilson, one year.
Yes, sir.
And Ralph D. Ruggs, three years.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would accept those, um, additions, uh, to my, uh, motion to approve.
It has been properly motioned that we will accept the recommendations from Mayor Gully for historical Besmer Historical Commission. Just, excuse me, y'all. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Carter.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe. Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thicke Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nays, the motion carries.
Let me ask a question. If we should find out that one is not a voter in the city of Besmer and or Jefferson County, we will replace that person. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That would have to be. This is Shan. Uh, according to the statute, they have to live within territorial jurisdiction of the city.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, please.
Thank, thank y'all.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much. Have a great day. Thank you. Appreciate it.
A resolution authorizing mayor to execute an assistance agreement with meals on wheels for CDBG dash CB grant.
Counselor, you have your res- resolution for your meals on wheels for the student customer. Are there any questions and or questions and or? I'm sorry. Counselors, do you have any questions or concerns? Not a need to motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the item.
Wait a second.
Second.
Been properly moved and second that the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an assistance agreement with meals on wheels for CB, CDBG dash CB grant. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Carter.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thicke Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, please.
Resolution extending the Besmer Street Paving Project contract with Central Alabama Asphalt and Construction LLC until September ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Counselor, you've you've seen your resolution extending the Besmer Street Paving Project to September the ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I think in planning session, um, I asked for Attorney Peyton to do some, um, some research on, on this information and.
And this is a valid extension of the previous agreement. I mean, the agreement calls it was a one-year contract with two one-year extensions and it does fall within the state did law.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, um, I moved the approval of the resolution.
Discussion. I mean, I was still talking, um, if you don't mind. Um, my, my concern was as far as in, um, the legit, well, the fairness to any other, uh, entity that, uh, he just makes, um, the statement that it's valid, it's for a valid extension. I mean, have we taken into consideration as far as in being able to open this up to other paving companies as well? Have we thought to consider that? Or are we going to consider that?
That's not a legal question, is it? I don't think that's not directed at me.
The counsel.
Madam Chair, again, move the resolution. Second.
Has been properly moved and second that we will move the resolution extending the Besmer Street Paving Project. Are there any, is there any discussion?
Um, I was in the middle of my discussion as to, um, opening it up.
I didn't hear you, Counselor Crusoe.
I said, I was in the middle of discussion when the motion and the, uh, second came forth. So, um, it, it's been motion and second now.
You still have a discussion. You have discussion after your motion and your second.
Well, it's, it's no problem. I mean, we're, um, well, let's go ahead and.
If no other discussion, roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Madam Chair.
Um, who?
That was Alexander. I was, I, I was, I wanted to ask a question. Up until this point, I know, um, it's saying like a hundred and forty-seven thousand or something. Up until this point, that's how much money we have saved off their contract of six hundred thousand.
Counselor Alexander, the contract amount was six hundred and sixty-three thousand up through the, up through the end of July. Um, they had ex, uh, the contract had expensed four hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety, leaving a balance of the contract of hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. I anticipate it's averaging about fifty thousand a month, uh, around there averaging. So I would anticipate the final estimate to be around five hundred and seventy-five thousand, leaving you around eighty-eight thousand dollars under contract budget.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
A question for legal. I think you, Shan, I think you said that it could be extended to two years. So next year it would be rebid?
No, so with, it's, uh, it was a one-year contract with two extensions each of one year. So, so we've had one year. This is the second year. If, if the council decided to extend it for a third year, it would come back before the council.
Okay. So, but it will be rebid at some point. It's.
After the third year, yes, ma'am.
Okay, just checking. Okay.
Okay, twenty-two would be the third year. Is that correct?
Uh, twenty-two, twenty-three would be the third year. I think, Daniel, what's the date on that contract in front of it? What was the original date of it?
The original date of the contract initially was September ninth, twenty twenty. So this is the first extension.
Yeah, so except, it goes twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one was the first year, twenty-one to twenty-two is year two, twenty-two to twenty-three would be year three, but you vote on them each year. So this is, this is the first extension of two, but you have to do that and you can't do any more than that. After the third year, you would rebid.
So we would have to come back and vote again, uh, next year. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
But multiple companies were able to bid on it last year.
That's correct.
Okay, that was a good question. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Carter.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Nay.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thicke Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Six eyes, one nay, the motion carries.
Item number sixteen, please.
A resolution authorizing mayor to execute an agreement with the Besmer Board of Education for the use of their stadium facility.
Mayor Gully.
Um, President, I'm going to, uh, allow Mr. Woodard and so to speak to, uh, 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 this item concerning what he's proposing over there, him and our attorney's update. Mr. Woodard.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. Oh, afternoon. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. What I was, um, proposing is an agreement that, uh, I talked with the Ms. Hale, Principal Hale at the high school and, uh, Coach Nielsen, uh, who is the head football coach. Uh, we have been, uh, in discussion of trying to use their facility, which is the stadium for our youth football cheerleading program. Uh, right now, uh, we, uh, we put together an agreement that hopefully, um, should go before the board. Um, I'm thinking this, this evening is their meeting, uh, to allow us to use their facility. Now, I've asked the mayor to, uh, look at, uh, this agreement and the attorney and see if it was okay from our end. So until it comes back again, if there are any differences. Otherwise, this is what we're proposing, that we use their facility, uh, for five games for this year and proposing, uh, Otherwise, this is what we're proposing, that we use their facility, uh, for five games for this year and proposing, uh, for next year. This will be the first time that we've, we've done this.
And Mister, why are we, why are we using their field?
For logistical purposes, as of now, we have to put up, uh, this black tarp around our facility outside, which we, uh, this year, um, is, is a challenge, uh, each time to put it up and leave it up, uh, for most of the season. And it would be logistically, uh, more feasible for us if we could use a facility that is self-contained, uh, and more crowd-wise, uh, for us to use. That's the primary reason.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Logistically, when, uh, the rec center was built, did we not take into account that we did have a little league football team? And they will need a field to play on?
Well, uh, Counselor, I cannot answer that, uh, because I came in after the, um, plans have been drawn and the field had already been, uh, proposed. Um, so I, I can't answer that. That's a question for either
Don't the Latin, don't the Latino community use that field as well for soccer?
They do.
So what will be the barrier for them, uh, not using the field?
They are not charging, uh, for, uh, entry into the facility. Most of your little league teams around the cities uh, generate most of their revenue through the gate and/or if you have a facility like the stadium, they can charge for parking. We cannot charge according to the league for parking if we are not using, uh, a facility like the stadium. So that's how we
So we don't, as of right now, we don't have a field for our boys to play on. If the rec center
I'm sorry. We, excuse me. We do have a field. It's whether or not we charge for entry, uh, to the football games. And in order to do that for any game, we would have to put the tarp up so we can crowd control and send them to a particular gate or gates.
And how many years have we been doing, using that method to put the tarp up?
Um, three years at this point would be fourth. This will be our fourth year. We didn't use it last year. We did not have a program last year. The center has only, would have, the center would have been open, uh, as of, uh, next month, five years. So one of those, one of those years would not have a program. Mm-hmm.
Mayor and or
Mr. Woodard.
Have we spoken to the superintendent, uh, because that, this, this was turned down? Have we spoke to the superintendent?
Is that to me, ma'am?
Um, either or, Mayor and or Mr. Woodard. I spoke with the, uh, President of the Board on last evening, and it was turned down. The Board does not want to, um, rent that, um, that field out down there because from what I'm told, it's not, um, it's not meant to be rented out and because of their policies and procedures.
Madam President, I have not spoken with the superintendent, but it had been my understanding and stuff that, and so the, uh, 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 the school board and, uh, 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 or at least since of the, uh, the coaches, uh, and principal there was in agreement and is up to, uh, uh, to partner with the city and so been doing so. So, uh, I do know that, uh, at, at one particular point, uh, it may have been on the agenda and it was taken off the agenda because we weren't ready yet because it had not been discussed and so with, uh, 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 obviously, uh, legal and the city council in order and so to, uh, to do this. But that would be the first that I heard that the school system and so had, ha- having issue uh, uh, with the partnership there because, uh, initially I, uh, uh, all part is concerned was in agreement. So that would be the first time that I've heard that. Now, Mr. Woodard, I don't know if you've heard anything, um, in addition to that, but uh, uh, I was under the understanding and stuff that that agreement between and so the, uh, city and the school board and so it had already been submitted, and it was just somewhat awaiting approval and so from legal and city council.
Yes, and, uh, the same last Monday, I have was, had sent, had been trying to get it back with the principal. And he did get back with me and said that he would be sure that it got to the, uh, he was in full support of it. We had a long conversation. And, um, it was supposed to go on to the board, but I have not heard anything back. I have, uh, reached out to him, uh, to get back to me. And I have not because I know it was going to come up on our, uh, cap, on the agenda today. But I have not heard anything back from him in either way. But he was highly supportive of it. And, um, he didn't anticipate, at least at that time, that anything would go. But I have not talked to the superintendent personally.
My suggestion. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Um, my concern, um, I know in, um, previously there were some issues of safety with the, um, with the stadium. So if we were to enter into a partnership with, um, the Board of Education to house, I guess, or to facilitate our, uh, uh, youth, uh, or little league team as far as with games. It was, um, being said, um, it, um, somewhat that, um, it was, yeah, you know, I guess, uh, it, you know, the stadium has, has vested. So, um, are we considering, um, I guess, the safety of, um, of, of the kids and the family or occupants who go, um, to these games? Who does that liability fall upon if, um, something does transpire while utilizing Snit Snyder?
Well, that, uh, that would be a question, of course, for the attorney, but I'm sure, uh, in the agreement, the attorney put in that that they will be in compliance with all state and, uh, their policies, procedures, and all the safety measures. Uh, that would be a legal question. I, I, I couldn't answer that, but I don't
Let me ask a question. Hold on. I, I hear Snit Snyder and I see Bessemer City High School. Which stadium are we speaking of?
The high school. The high school.
Okay. Got it. I err with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I would suggest, because it was told to me by the President of the Board, that that had been turned down. I would suggest that before we, um, vote on this, not that I'm, I'm against it because I'm, I'm for in the safety of the children, point blank, period. Um, we check to see whether or not, uh, the city of Bessemer will indeed enter into an agreement with the Bessemer Board of Education before we vote on this, um, resolution.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The, the attorney has prepared the document. I don't see what it hurts for us to go on and do our side of approving this because I think it's beneficial and it's something that, that we ought to do. And then I think the board meets tonight. Then if the board does not want to agree to it, then okay, it's over. But we're here now in a meeting. So we, in my opinion, need to take the action that we need to take from our side.
Thank you, sir.
And then we'll let them do what they want to do.
Thank you, sir.
And, and then maybe there is no agreement or there is an agreement.
Thank you, sir. We can do that, Counsel. Um, Counsel, is that something that this, this body wants to entertain?
Just, um, I guess, we're still continuing with the statement that I made even with the wrong location. As far as with this resolution, does it entail the liability, um, who, who, I mean, you, um, Attorney Payton?
What is the question regarding liability?
As to with, with this partnership, if, if something transpires or, um, you, as, as far as in with this partnership, who is, who will we, who would be liable or responsible, or responsible?
We're, they are responsible for the maintenance and repairs of the stadium. We're responsible from a liability standpoint, while we're in use of that stadium, we're responsible for actions that happen while we're using it. So what we've said in this agreement is that the city will add the Board of Education to our insurance policy as an additional insured for events of liability that could arise during our use of the stadium.
And with that, uh, then them, is it a, in, does it increase the rate, um, for the city of Bessemer by, and, um, the Board of Education?
And that would be an in- a question for the insurance company, but I would not, I would not think so during, typically, when you do things like that during a policy period, they do not. And they're reviewed separately afterwards. So I would not think so. But that's, that, in a real legal question, so I don't know the answer.
I mean, a legal question, I mean, you, you are legal, aren't you?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that, I mean, that, so I'm, I'm I'm in total agreement as far as with our youth needing somewhere to go, um, in, in, in a way possible. I mean, I've, I've always, you know, been, you adamant about saving our kids and doing what we can to, um, you know, get them off the, off the street and to occupy idle, idle minds. But to come, you know, enter into an agreement with, with all of the I's not dotted or the T's crossed. I mean, I, I'm just trying to get a clear understanding in order to make a rational, um, and reasonable decision.
Sure, it's fairly standard. It's fairly standard when you lease a piece of property to name the owner in this instance as an additional insured on your policy to make sure that they're covered. And so you would be covered and they would be covered.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
There was only one thing I saw in here that I didn't see the sum, you know, for, for the rentals, but Attorney Payton, you have an idea? Comments on that?
Sure, uh, that was, let me look at this. That was, I know Mr. Wood, Mr. Woodard was checking on that. I thought it was five hundred dollars per use, and there were five uses at twenty-five hundred dollars, but I know he was going to check on that. Mr. Woodard, would you speak on that with?
Yes, in our conversation with the, uh, principal and the coach was that we would agree to five hundred dollars per game. Uh, and a grand, and a grand total of five games of two hun- um, excuse me, two thousand five hundred dollars.
So under the compensation section, number three, that some needs to be, the board has agreed to charge the city the sum of five hundred dollars for each use, and the five designated Saturdays are set forth above.
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move the resolution.
Second, please.
Discussion.
And who was that?
Alexander.
And, and Counselman Carter.
It's been properly
Oh, I didn't hear you, Counsel Carter. I'm sorry.
It's both, it's both. But go ahead first. I'll go second.
Okay, uh, is it okay for me to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Woodard, would this be a one-time thing for this year or would this be a renewing thing every football season for our young, young athletes?
Um, no, this was the agreement that we, I put in here was for this year and next year. And in that way, it would give time to see how this year went, and if there are some challenges that we need to renegotiate next year. Uh, but I asked for the two school seasons, uh, uh, school year, this year.
And are you looking, are you looking into anything like barricades or anything, um, to go in place after this two years is up? Uh, so we can continue at the rec center?
Uh, yes, well, we are thinking about that, yes. There will be some discussions with the mayor uh, about some other alternatives that we make and consider.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Woodard, is there any way that we can up the amount because, uh, we know we have those regular games, but, you know, uh, our teams normally always go to the playoffs and I'm quite sure that we gonna have at least two playoff games. So instead of coming back to the council again, could we kind of go ahead and put that in the contract too?
Uh, yes, excuse me. Go ahead.
We kind of put that in contract too, but we wanted to come, go back and do another vote, coming back, you know, to make sure everything is done. I know we, we gonna at least have two playoff games.
Um.
We normally get home field advantage.
No, uh, you said, did we put that in there? No, that's not
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying the amount of money, could we, could we extend the amount of money plus the amount of, uh, 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 gains, you know, um, say five?
No, we wouldn't have to, to, to necessarily do that.
Okay.
But, uh, it's like one of the games, for example, with homecoming. Homecoming would be brought back to, to here. Because just logistically, it would be easier and the teams would prefer being on, on campus here at the rec center.
Okay.
But I understand what you're saying, uh, about upping the amount for the school board. In other words, we asked for a six game, so to speak. Uh, I think in, within that year. Is that what you're, if I could understand?
You were saying not to exceed over twenty-five hundred. I was saying, you know, we might need an extra game or two because the kids, you know, all, all the teams normally, you know, being in the playoffs, and we normally get to the second round.
I would rather add that as an addendum if I go back and talk with them.
Okay.
You, you know, because that's I, I would rather, right now, we are, uh, kind of crunching it. I've been working on it about two, a little over two months, and our first game is the twenty-eighth, and I, I, I appreciate, uh, uh, Counselor, uh, recommending that we try and do something with it so that we can at least go there. And then if we have to add an addendum to it, I hope the attorney, I'm speaking correctly. We can add an, an addendum later, but our first game is the twenty-eighth, our home game. And hopefully we can get something, one way or the other, either they are not going to approve it tonight, or they are, so that we can move forward. But I would look at, Counselor, I would look at that.
Okay. I was just, I was just stating that, you know, uh, I'm with moving forward and everything, but I was just stating that, uh, for the dollar amount because, you know.
Madam Chair, may I call, may I call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. It has been properly motioned and seconded by Counselor Alexander and Carter that will accept the resolution with, um, to execute an agreement with Bessemer Board of Education for the stadium at the Bessemer City High School. Roll call Ms. Taylor.
Counsel Alexander.
Hi.
Counselor Carter.
Uh.
Counselor Crusoe.
Hi.
Counsel Marshall.
Hi.
Counsel Dick Pan.
Hi.
Counsel Matthews. He's left. Counsel Donald.
Hi.
Six eyes, no nays, the motion carries.
Item number seventeen, please.
An ordinance slash policy requiring the wearing of face covering in all municipal buildings located in the city of Bessemer.
Counselors, as you know, um, Governor Kay Ivey has called a thing of emergency. CDC has asked that, um, everyone wear your mask to combat COVID nineteen and or the Delta variant. With the city of Bessemer having recent, um, positive COVID, we're asking that, um, we go back to wearing our mask inside of the city municipal buildings. Is that something that we want to entertain, Counsel? Is that something we want to entertain, Counsel?
Madam Chair.
That, Madam Chair.
Um.
How are you?
Okay, Counselor, um, Marshall.
I wanted to move the resolution.
I second.
Okay. It has been properly moved and seconded that we will move the resolution.
It's the ordinance.
Uh, I'm sorry, the ordinance slash policy requiring the wearing of face coverings in all municipal buildings located in the city of Bessemer. Any discussion? If not, I need a roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Collier.
Uh.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thickpan.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number uh, eighteen, please.
A resolution authorizing mayor to execute an independent consultant agreement with Ask Development Solutions Incorporated.
Mayor Gully.
Madam President, this is uh, the uh, N R S A that we just finished discussing and stuff in planning session. This right here would be some engaging in that uh, consultant in order and stuff to uh, 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 to do what is necessary and stuff on the uh, the, the, the N R S A that we just discussed.
Counselors, you heard Mayor Gully, we did discuss it in um, planning session. Are there any questions and or concerns? If not, I need a motion, please, and a second.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move the item.
Second.
Has been properly moved and seconded that we will um, give Mayor Gully. Allow Mayor Gully to enter into a resolution or contract with numbers while I just had. I do apologize, you are with Ask Development Solution. Any discussion? If not, roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Collier.
Uh.
Counselor Cruslow.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thickpan.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, item number nineteen, please.
Resolution allocating funds appropriated in line, item one zero 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 dash five two eight one two five of the general fund budget for the city of Bessemer for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one to West Hill Elementary School and Bessemer Middle School.
Um, I think this is Counselor Marshall.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to move the resolution.
Second. Has been properly moved and seconded that the back-to-school rally funds will be going to West Hills Elementary School and Bessemer City Middle School. Any discussion? If not, I need a motion. I'm sorry, I need a roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Collier.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thickpan.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, item number twenty, please.
Approval of seventeen oh five twenty-fourth Street North.
Mayor Gully, did we ever get an appraisal on that property? Mayor Gully. Attorney Payton.
Madam President, I'm sorry, what's the question?
Did we ever get an appraisal as requested on seventeen oh five twenty-fourth Street?
Um, I, I, I do not know that. I certainly didn't ask for one. I, I don't know if the mayor did or not.
Um.
Uh, Madam President, it was never requested and so of the mayor, so to get an appraisal on that property.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Gully. Um, Counselor Alexander.
Madam Chair, since we don't have anything in place right now, we said we was gonna uh, get together as a body and put some uh, legals in place uh, about city property. Can we go ahead and just move this resolution, this item? And let this young lady assume this, acquire this property for her and her family. This is her family home. And we have had no other interest.
Ma- Madam, Madam Chair.
One moment.
Alexander, you finished?
Counselor Thick.
I'm finished, go ahead, Council Marshall.
Uh-uh, Counselor Thickpen, please.
Thickpen, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I pulled up records on this and we foreclosed for sixteen thousand two forty-two. And the tax, excuse me, taxes says value is thirty-two thousand. So I think the amount that she's offering is ridiculously low. I mean, I understand it might be a family property, but cities needs to recoup as much as we can for this property. I mean, when we sell property to other entities, we have, we base it on the tax assessment. Is that correct, Attorney Payton?
You, you do not have to uh, base it on the tax assessed values, but I mean, the law does not require fair market value.
Okay.
It's in plenty of properties we didn't um, didn't base on, on, on the tax record.
Counselor Alexander, thank you.
I'm just saying, the, the foreclosure amount, sixteen thousand two forty-two would be a fair amount, in my opinion, as a realtor. And having looked at this property, this property is not a four or a five thousand dollar property.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Please, one moment, please. Counselor Marshall.
Thank you. Um, y- y- you, you know, I, I just think it's important that we try to recoup some of our money. I've gone by the property. It is not a four thousand dollar property. We need to just take the time and um, get an agent, list the property and see what we can get uh, to try to recover some of our money. Uh, I mean, that, that's the responsible thing to do. When we took an oath, we said we'd be responsible and try to do what's in the best interest of the city. And to, to sell a piece of property, this piece of property for four thousand dollars without at least uh, having it listed to see. Now, we may not get any takers and, you know, we may decide that we take the best offer we can get. But I think we owe it to ourselves to at least list the property and see what it brings.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think um, in in, in, in the, I guess measures or procedures of, of doing things properly, um, you know, that does sound reasonable. But that hasn't been the practices here in the city of Bessemer. Uh, you know, we have sold several uh, properties that we haven't had an appraisal. We didn't, no, no, nobody brought tax records before us. Matter of fact, we didn't even know that we own and they were, they weren't listed. We didn't have multiple um, beaters on it. Matter of fact, um, you know, closing documentation was presented to us and, and we were left to vote upon it. So um, you know, I mean, I just can't understand how we're trying to establish common practices here on, on this item. Um, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm, I'm motion that we move this item, please.
Second.
Been properly motioned. Back.
Madam Chair.
One moment, Counselor, uh, Collier. That this property will so, be sold back to the original, the daughter of the original homeowner for the amount of four thousand dollars. Discussion, please.
Madam, I'm, I'm, Cruz, I mean, um, Counselor, um, Collier and.
I was trying, I was trying to see in my packet, I got one letter and it says fifty-three hundred.
You look in your second pack or and or that you look in your email?
Uh, I ain't looking at my email, so we got two bids or we got one bid?
Uh, you have, uh, you had two bids.
Okay.
And a one for four thousand and you had one for fifty-three hundred um, from a realtor. She wants the property to flip the house for profit. And the first young lady wants the property to um, Ms. Connors wants the property to uh, invest in and live in because it was once her family's property. So we have um, Attorney Payton, let me ask a question. We have two bids here. One for four and one for fifty-three. How will we, will we vote on them individual?
Well, I think right now there's a motion on the floor for the four thousand dollar offer.
Okay.
Uh, and so you could either consider that one, since the motion's been made. I don't know if it's, yeah, and it was seconded, so that's the resolution on the floor is for four thousand dollars. If it, it does not pass, then you certainly could consider the other one, but if you do not have to do either one. Well, you could do the one that's, you have before you. If that doesn't pass, go to the second one or none of the two above.
Madam President.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm look, I'm just thinking back to the property that we had, Botens, Botangs, however you want to say it. And such a fit was pitched because the wife of the original owner or a family member was trying to buy it for less than what it had foreclosed for.
Yeah.
And it was voted down for other reasons, but I mean, there was a lot of discussion about that. This is no different. This is a family member, family house, don't know who we got, who is it was foreclosed on, but it's the same situation. You know, you're trying to buy it.
One, one moment, Counselor Alexander, allow her to finish.
You're trying to buy it for less than it's worth. And I don't know who this friend is of who, which council member, but somebody's gotta be friends with them or they wouldn't be trying to push this through. When all I've heard for the last three years is we need to be uh, aware of the money that we're spending or accepting for these properties. You know, it's, it's a waste of money for the city. I think it should be listed and that we should get the highest offer on it. The fifty-three hundred is higher. I don't care if she's wanting to flip it or not. If she flips it, it's gonna be, it's gonna make the property worth more and the housing around it might worth more. So, I mean, you need to at least consider those. I think there's something going on. I mean, it just doesn't sound right.
Well, that's fine. If it doesn't sound right to you, that's fine. I have asked that we vote on both of them. And.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Presidents to, I'm not giving, I'm talking, uh, Counsel Marshall.
Right here.
I'm not giving presidents to the four thousand and I'm not giving presidents to the fifty-three hundred.
Oh, let's see how you vote.
Oh, you don't have to worry about it. I've already told you, watch my voting, you'll see me.
Okay, alright.
Let's go, uh, uh.
Madam Chair, can I respond?
Uh, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, no, ma'am. Ms. Taylor.
May I have a vote, please?
Roll call, please.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Collier.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Nay.
Counselor Thickpan.
Nay.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
That's what I said, let's see how you vote.
Yeah, one, 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 one of your friends, I mean, you know, one of your friends.
Counselor Marshall, Counselor Marshall is just like one of your friends is on the historic society that's not even a voter in the city of Bessemer nor Jefferson County. So let's not talk about friends, okay? Let us not do that, Counselor Marshall. Please don't. I need, I, I need a motion, I need a motion, please.
I try to give you respect.
I try, I need a.
You don't deserve respect.
Give me a motion, please. And a second to adjourn this meeting, please.
Motion to adjourn.
I need a second.
Why we, why we adjourn?
Because I'm not going to be disrespected by Counselor Marshall. I will not do it. I give him nothing but reg- regardless to what he is, regardless to what he deserves, I give him nothing and I have been taught to respect my elders. I give him nothing but, I don't care what he says or what he does. I give him nothing but respect. I will, I, I will, I will, Counselor Marshall, respect you today. I am so sorry, whatever's going on with you is going on. May I have a? Oh, you're so welcome. May I have a motion, please, for um, the fifty-three hundred on seventeen, seventeen oh five twenty-fourth Street, please? I mean, a motion or a second for us to accept and or deny the fifty-three hundred for seventeen oh five twenty-fourth Street.
I don't even have that one, but in front of me.
If you don't get a motion, then it doesn't get brought before the council.
Right.
So we could skip on over that. I would suggest that we put this house up on the market to list it.
Thank you so much.
I mean, it may not bring up anymore, but I think it's prudent for us to do what's best for the city.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Thickpen.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing payment to E E F S Company P C for May twenty twenty-one invoice.
Counselors, you have your paperwork for E E F. E E F S in front of you. Are there any questions and or concerns?
Madam Chair, we looking for a motion?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, first, I'm looking for whether or not there are any questions and or concerns. If there's not, I'm looking for a motion and a second.
But Madam, uh, Chair, I move the item.
Give me a second, please.
Second.
Has been properly moved and seconded that we will um, acknowledge the authorization payment for E E F S Company P C Civil and Structural Engineers. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander. Counselor Collier.
Uh.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thickpan.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, item number twenty-two, please.
Council members' comments, statements or motions.
District one, please.
I'll keep forwarding everything to the mayor's office.
Thank you, District two. District two.
I'm sorry, I had stepped out, uh, but District two look like a garbage dump. If we could get the street department over there, uh, the whole District two, even in the alley, stuff need to be picked up. I understand that we don't have as many employees as we supposed to, but can we just at least try to do stuff in a timely manner and get some of the districts cleaned up?
District four.
I'll continue to send mine through the mayor's office.
Thank you, District five. District six. District seven.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first of all, I would like to offer my condolences um, to the Perkins family and to the Bessemer school system for our um, loss of um, Ms. Tyce Perkins. Um, she's one of the school teachers here in the city of Bessemer, I would like to make sure. Um, the Perkins family, um, you had our prayers and condolences. Um, as far as in, in District seven, I uh, sent uh, an email or taken this, I think, um, to, to Ray Norris concerning the, the tree contract that we previously had years ago. I can't recall the name of it. Uh, my question is, do we still have some type contract with a um, a tree cutting company outside of Bessemer, well, um, I, um, I guess beyond just the one that's on the tree limb. I, um, I guess beyond just the ones that's on the tree limbs. Because I've gotten a, a few calls here in district seven whereby. Um, the street uh limbs are hanging over into the streets. And I mean, even though they are not around um. The power lines also on some of the main streets being the Dartmouth Avenue, Berkeley Avenue, Claringdon. Owing Avenue where the trees are hanging so low that you, you really can't walk um down the sidewalk without. Uh, being snagged by um, by tree limbs. So again, my question would be and is. Um, what type contract do we have with um, a tree cut, uh, tree cutting company? That's if, if we, if we, if we do have one. Excuse me. Um, I would like um, to make a request that we get out and um. Pay some attention or serve nerd, notice unto, unto the Arlington School Lot. It's beginning to kind of go back into the condition that it was previously in. Um, next, um, well, across the street that store that I've made mention to us concerning. The eighteen wheelers and um. The, the, I, I guess all of the trash or junk that's being piled up on the porch. Of um, that previous grocery store. Well, I know they said that um, you know, Chief Roper would go out and uh speak with Mr. Clayton concerning that and. Um, happen to alleviate that problem here in district, district seven. Um, uh, this is one of uh. Uh, um, the issues in district seven, I can imagine it should be an, an issue throughout all districts. Um. We've been having a lot of these trains remaining on the track. And um, numerous complaints concerning that. I understand that, you know, um, the railroad, the, our trains are owned by the, our railroad company. But here, and, and I know that this fight has been going on for, for several decades. But we're going to have to come up with some. Type, your bulldog approach. On. God, reading our cities, uh, our, our city from being trapped on one, on, on one side of the track. We have um, emergencies all of the time in the city of Bessemer and if we have trains on the track. Or traffic being backed up with the one, um, I guess, um, yeah. I guess one route of being able to go on the, uh, on the other side of the track. It, it, it's becoming more and more of an issue for the citizens here in district seven. I can't speak for, um, all of the districts. But um, i- if we can look and see about getting in contact with the train company to read of the, of, of this situation. Will greatly a- appreciate that. And, and I'm more than certain that. This type practice could not go on in some other municipalities and some attention not be drawn to it. Um, we here in the city of Bessemer, we value our livelihood and um. And the freedom and, and liberty to be able to go from one side of the, uh, train track. Without having to sit for hours or have to travel all the way down to another city in order to um cross over. Um, a, a, a railroad track and then come and then go home. So if, if we can um get somebody to look at that. Also. Um, did we ever come up with the status? Um, or an appraisal that we were waiting on concerning the sweet house? Um, I, I mean, I guess I'll ask one more question and then I'll, I'll await my answers to, to these questions. Um, I also received a phone call concerning um, an investor for the historic homes here in district seven. Can someone tell me what is the status of the historic, um, with the committee that oversees the historic home, home? And also the status of, of any type funds available for someone who has purchased. One of these historic houses. Do we have a fund, any funds available for renovations um to these properties? I'll await my answers and if anyone needs um. Uh, me to repeat my question, then I, I, I will be so, um, thanks, Madam Chair.
No, ma'am, we'll let your answers come. Who are you asking those to? Counselor Crusoe.
Okay, um, as far as with the tree cutting, um, that, that will be for Mayor Gully. What, what, what do we have in place for that?
Okay, and your next ones?
Um, the Arlington School Lot, um, ask Mayor Gully to pass it over to Freedom Sanitation to, to serve notice there. The um, the status of the sweet house that's back on with Mayor Gully. Um, and who, maybe, the, the, I mean, I guess Mayor Gully would be able to have someone of his employees or somebody to give me. Some information concerning the funding for someone who's purchased a, a historic house in um, in, in, in the historic district.
Counselor Crusoe, will you put those into writing in an email to uh Mayor Gully, please, and he will respond back to you in email?
Not a problem. I will, I will do that. Thank you.
So much. Counselors, I thank you. In district three, we um, as I stated, we uh, we are victim over from this um. From this COVID and the postal services and us not being able to get. Uh, parts for um, the truck that was uh purchased for us. I would ask my uh citizens in district three, please just be patient with us. Just be patient with us. We're going to um. Mayor Gully has promised that he would do, uh, he would clean up over there. Um, Pampers Palooza was a great success. We gave out three hundred and twenty-five boxes. Of Pampers along with the wipes and anything having to do with. A baby and an unexpected mother. We will be doing it again the first Saturday in uh September. Uh, another Pampers Palooza. It was just that um. Um, that, just that great, you all. Uh, thank you, counselors. Thank everyone. I, I do apologize for us being so long. But this was our um, second meeting and we did not have a meeting on, on last week. But I will say thank you for your time. And your patience. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting, a second and a roll call, please.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
You, Madam President, I'm sorry, I had, I had a question for the attorney.
Yes.
Uh, you'll see there's a. Uh, not pro, non-for-profit for the city. What is it? Hall of History.
Yes, ma'am.
And there, she was wanting to write a letter. She was, she attended the meeting earlier today, Shirley Butler. And um. I just wanted to clarify because they're needing help with their air conditioner has gone out. And I told her I did not think that we. Were allowed to give them money. For repairs. Is that correct, Attorney Peyton?
That, that's correct. I mean, the, the nonprofit m- money that the city. Uh, pays to nonprofits is for services rendered, so they enter into a contract for services. We, we cannot. Uh, donate funds to. Not, not-for-profits.
Okay, so they are submitting their nonprofit. Um, request for money. With their, I mean, I don't know if we could up the money that they're requesting. That might help them in the end, but I had told her that I didn't think that we could do that. I mean, we couldn't. Give them the money for the repairs. But uh. I'll get back with her and let her know that I did ask that question. And uh. I know that building is probably tough without air conditioning in it. But thank you.
So much. I need a second to adjourn it, please.
Second.
Probably look, second that we are adjourned this meeting for today, June seventeen, seventeen, two thousand twenty-one. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Collier.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe. Counsel, okay, she, Counselor Marshall.
He's gone.
Counselor Thick Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
For ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. You all have a great weekend.
You too, bye-bye.
Thank you.